Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our study session. Today, we'll be talking about budget, one of our most favorite topics here at the city. And we will probably kick it off to the mayor and then she'll probably kick it off to Mr. Boston.
You've got it. Thank you, Council President. Why don't you tee up the first slide?
Absolutely.
Matt, and I'll talk about what we were planning to present today. And then, we want to talk a lot, well, first of all, I want to just say, we should, we should take a step back and congratulate ourselves. We had a tough budget situation, a tough year. A budget has passed. Not all of our problems are gone, but, but I think, I just want to thank the council for the work and the diligence. I mean, we could still be talking about this, right? But we now have a two-year framework and something to move forward from, so, thank you for that. And thanks to the staff, too. Thank you, Kate and Matt, and Matt's team, and others on the team that answered questions and dug in. And, and I want to thank our collective bargaining leadership, who also made some sacrifices and went along with us over the, over the course of the year, as we really tried to come up with a whole variety of options on the, on the expense side. And then again, thanks to the voters for passing the community safety sales tax proposal, because that's giving us some real opportunities to make those public safety investments that are such a priority for our neighborhoods and community. Special shout out also to our public safety departments, to police and fire, to new, new chiefs there, Chief Oberg and Chief Hall, who kind of had to jump in, in an underwater budget situation. So, where do we go from here? We're, we're proposing today to talk about the calendar over this year and over the next two years. Matt is going to give an update on the things that will be coming up budget-related in the first quarter, so people can get that on their framework outlook. We want to talk about what our current authorizing environment is in terms of how we do the budget work together as executive and legislative branch. And we thought this would be a good time to give a big picture overview of where we're at with collective bargaining and what's coming up on the collective bargaining front. We want to leave time for you to suggest areas in, that are budget-financial related that you want to dig into more, so that we can get those on future agendas and questions about any of the above. So, that's, that's the game plan. Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So, first and foremost, again, I want to echo what the mayor said. Thank you for everybody that was involved for getting the biennium passed. I mean, it was a Herculean lift to, to get that through. The work is certainly not over, as we all know. There's a lot of challenges ahead, but we really took a step back after the budget passed, and we know with the updated committee schedule from the council, there is opportunity to make these budget sessions to be more strategic and forward-looking as we're, as we're kind of discussing things. I think, in years past, from council's perspective, a lot of the, a lot of the discussions were only about the ground underneath our feet and not necessarily looking towards the horizon. So, we set out a handful of topics and initiatives that we wanted to talk about into 2025, as we're looking at these budget discussions and making them a little bit more forward-looking. Here are just a handful of the, the examples that we talked about in our October meeting, and then added a couple more in here. So, ongoing, we'd really like to review current and future policy and fiscal impact to determine efficiency effectiveness and costliness of Spokane Municipal Code. I think with the SMC cleanup, as well as commitment from the council, we've had a lot of discussion of code that's out there. Kate and I have talked about this already. Code that's out there of, you know, what that financial impact is, of code that's already in place, as well as code that is upcoming. So, how can we truly quantify that and make sure that we're setting aside dollars to truly follow the, the spirit and the intent of the code that we're putting forward from the legislative side? So, that's going to be an ongoing discussion that we're talking about, and Kate and I have already started those discussions. In the future, since, as I suggested, committee meetings are more expanded, and we've, we have more time for kind of the nuts and bolts of discussions and budget-to-actuals and a lot of the reports that you receive from the Budget Office or the Investment Office, we would, we would like to suggest doing a bimonthly meeting for the budget meeting, now that we are in a biennium. We previously did a, every single month, and we focused those on budget-to-actuals and kind of what was upcoming in the next budget, but giving ourselves a look at the horizon could be beneficial for the city. So, March, we're, we're really planning on looking at the, the property evaluation and the financial decision, decision roadmap. So, property evaluation, we have a large portfolio of properties within the city. I think utilization of, of those properties is a big question mark for the executive branch, the legislative branch, and quite frankly, the constituents. And so, the, the, the city has engaged in a contract with an outside real estate advisor that's going to help us look at this. Councilmember Klitsky has, has started this process to kind of also look at, and I don't know if you want to talk at the, talk at all about the, the portfolio or the real estate putting assets to work program at all? If you'd like to, feel free. If not?
Look, putting assets to work is just a program that the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation is funding right now, for just to look at all of their available properties and find ways to capture value from them and make sure that we're doing the best we can with the land that we own. So, but the ball's kind of, in the administration's court now, what to do with that, don't really have the authority to go beyond the ideation of working with this group. So, they've kind of taken the torch and are
Yeah.
...working with that organization.
Yep, yep. And it's, it's got some excellent grant fund opportunities there, again, with the, the real estate advisor that we've partnered with, as well as Anna McDaniel, our, our policy director, kind of looping that all together to see, okay, where are we going to go with the, the property portfolio that we have right now? And then, a good, a good segue into kind of our financial decision roadmap. What are we trying to, what are we trying to achieve? What is, what is true success for the, the finances of the city of Spokane? Where, where do we get to? We think that, you know, in talking to the, the leadership in the finance division, as well as other, other department and division heads, that an ERP is something that we truly need to strive for. Enterprise resource planning tool really does a excellent job of integrating all of the finance and enterprise-wide information that we have, merging it together so that it's not disconnected and not talking to each other. It gives us the ability to get better realtime information, as well as have better access to it by, by all key stakeholders, giving us better opportunity for external dashboards. The county is currently underway with that program. It, it is a, it is a big lift, and I think anybody that's been exposed to it, or even talked to anybody that's exposed to it, can tell you that it is, it is really a difficult thing to do, and it's something that we need to start planning for, because it's about a two- to four-year process to get that started. I've talked to you a little bit about that, of, of what is the, the groundwork that needs to be done, and our GL that we have, which is kind of our accounting books and numbers, needs to be cleaned up, and that's going to be probably a, a 12- to 24-month process right off the bat. So, we've, we've already started those conversations with a lot of key stakeholders. IT, the project management office, finance, HR are all starting to work together of trying to define what those outcomes are and how we integrate those, that, that ERP goal into some of the current needs that we're trying to obtain. So, banking relationships is one of them. Purchasing and contracting is another one of them. They're all getting folded into each other. So, that's, that's what we'd like to talk to you about in March. May, and I know Councilmember Bingle, this is, this is something very, very important to you, is the, the retirement fund evaluation. As, as we know, the retirement fund has been struggling over the past several years. We are, I, I, we don't have the year-end numbers for 2024, but in 2023, we're sub-70%. We had pushed the employee and employer contribution up to 11 and a quarter. As you all know, that that makes it very difficult for us to recruit and retain entry-level employees when 11 and a half percent is shaved off the top right off the bat, especially for a lot of the younger generation that doesn't see the benefit in a defined benefit contribution system. They all think 401K, and I can have my stockpile back here, but they don't see their retirement in, you know, 20, 30, 40 years. So, identifying what solutions we have there and really evaluating that is going to be The mayor has, has put an additional, two seats, I believe it was, one, one more seat from a union representative, as well as a mayor's representative on that board, to try to tighten the grasp. The good news is, is that the, and Councilmember Bingle and I have been in these meetings, the, the performance of the retirement system for 2024 has been pretty exceptional, based on the activity that we've seen so far. And then in July-
Before you go on, about the retirement, we have more than one retirement system. I would like a holistic view-
Absolutely.
-of all the retirement programs that the city is funding, that we are mandated to fund going forward.
Yeah.
I think there needs to be more knowledge around that, not just our main one, and, and where that looks going forward.
Absolutely.
So, include that.
And for, for context, the unfunded liabilities in SERs, it's like, close to $300 million, right?
Yep. Correct, correct. So, trying to get a, a solid understanding and a roadmap to where we're going and what success, again, looks like for the system is going to be important. On the flip side, we look at the, the Washington State Retirement System, and they're nearly 100% funded, so it's, it's, it's a challenge to really want to get there, not only from looking at the 11 and a half percent, but then the people that truly say, okay, yeah, retirement is important to me, and seeing that unfunded liability is, is obviously a concern. In July 2025, that brings us to a good segue in our investment and debt evaluation. After six months of the year with a new administration, we're going to have a better understanding of what's happening with interest rates, where we're going. We obviously have a, a certain degree of investments that are going to be maturing over the next six months. We had one that just matured not too long ago. We, we've talked a lot about LGIP and overnight cash and what we truly can invest in versus what we can't invest in, what the inverse yield curve means to the city of Spokane, and how that impact, impacts our long-term growth. Again, this is something that is very, very important to the city, because we have a substantial amount of, of funds that we can invest on an ongoing basis, and putting that money to work is hugely important for the, the city of Spokane. And that, that even includes our Spokane investment pool, short-term, or, I'm sorry, our lending program that we're going to talk a little bit more about, from our internal lending program. So, another great topic for discussion as we're looking at the, the long-term horizon. And then in September 25 and November 25, we're really going to be talking about the biennial budget adjustments. So, as, as you all know, the RCW allows us to make a adjustment for the biennium no earlier than September 1, but no later than 12/31. Currently, as the, the RCW is written right now, it has that the, the ordinance were, were to be passed on the first meeting of November, I believe it is. We'll talk a little bit more about that and some suggestions that we have. But is there anything else, as we kind of discuss these topics, is there anything else that we want to put on the board of saying, let's talk about it? Yeah?
I want to put on the board, but I want you to go back to the investments. I think it'd be great if you spoke to the investment board itself, again, who those people are and the role they play in our investments. I don't think all of us know who actually sits on that investment board for the city. That would be educational, I think, not only for the board, but if there are other community members who are interested in that, Mr. Boston.
Absolutely.
I, I guess I would love to see, particularly at March, but updates along the way, the, to start long-term, six-year budgeting, what that looks like and how that's changing-
Absolutely.
-as things get modified. And then, for the discussion on the biennial modification, I, my gut tells me that there's going to be some stuff to move around, so I, I just think we should start those conversations sooner than September, you know, even May or July, but, but sometime sooner than September.
And, and so this is, I, I think we absolutely can't start those conversations earlier. I mean, I think with the monthly reports that the budget and the investment, the, the monthly budget and investment reports that you get at the Finance Committee, I think that that is a great segue into these conversations of saying, okay, these are the building blocks that we're putting forward to formalize these conversations in September and, and start with the community engagement, because we're going to have a little bit more information, obviously, as, as the year progresses. But I, I don't think that we have to think about these in a silo. I think we can use both the committees, as well as the budget sessions, to, to truly have a holistic conversation. So, definitely something to put down.
If, I don't know if this is in there, but, you know, the, the use of 1590 and potential for bonding of 1590?
Absolutely. That's, that's, I don't know if Mayor wants to talk about that, but-
Yeah, special revenue funds.
Yeah, we are planning to, to bring that forward as a conversation topic. It's both financial, but in conjunction with housing and CHHS.
Yeah, and, and these are, those are types of conversations that we could also add to study sessions. I mean, we're already underway on the, the investigation piece of that 1590 and bonding and what our capacity is and what we can truly spend on, but definitely something that we can add to the, to any budget, or any study session.
Yeah, one other that just kind of reminded me, I, I think at some point, we really do need to have a broader conversation on annexations, future annexations, because that will have a financial impact on the city if we do or don't, and what that looks like, what are you, how are you planning with the county in advance of those things? That's what I'm saying.
Unpopular, it sounds like.
Unpopular, but I think it's-
Yeah, I mean-
Yeah, Marlene will be excited to come and have a conversation about that, so.
Well, and not only that, but annexations have historic past as well. I mean, we're, we're still paying for Fire District 10 in the tune of about $1.5 million a year for that annexation, because they just did a levy-lid lift that has an automatic renewal for the next five years. So, we're paying $1.50 and 50 cents on, on that levy-lid lift that, that doesn't benefit us, but we have to pay it out still. And evaluating that and understanding what that financial impact is for, for this group, obviously, but also for constituents is important.
So, I know we are changing how we receive our forecasting. We've had Dr. Jones on a quarterly basis, we're looking at something different. I'd like Matt or the mayor to tell us what that forecasting model around economic development and trends would look like, what your vision is for that. It can be on this list of months, but I think that'd be great for council to know what direction we're heading with forecasting.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Can I ask, just going back to the very beginning? Do you have, or has there been a plan developed on how we will be doing fiscal impact analyses and what that looks like?
Well, I would say a clear, concrete plan, no. Right now, Kate and I are kind of in the initial, the initial pass of it, right? Because it's, it's truly an executive and, and a legislative process to partner in that, in that. And as we're building policy for future years, what is the degree of analysis that needs to be done as we're putting that policy forward, as well as what is the retroactive analysis that we need to do? With a finite amount of budget, or with a finite amount of bandwidth in our employees, we have to be careful about it, right? So, really evaluating what is the, the most impactful first, and kind of working our way down that funnel is, is going to be the, probably the suggestion that we're going to have, and I, and I think Kate is in, of the same vein.
I could maybe comment on that. I think we've talked about this a little bit at Cabinet, although we haven't reached a conclusion. I mean, in an ideal situation, you would have good fiscal estimates coming forward with the legislation, as the ordinance is being debated and when amendments are being added in. So, have, figuring out kind of where that workload should go, I think, is the, is what we're grappling with, and, but I think that's a great topic for us to discuss further. At the, clearly, I come from the legislative arena in which you had a nonpartisan fiscal staff who worked with agencies. Still, the fiscal node process was kind of in the hands of agencies, but Commerce had a whole cadre of fiscal analysts that helped assist with that work across state government. We don't have that here, and we're much smaller, but we do, I think, we will benefit from being on the same page about what that process looks like.
And then, do we know what, when we say current, what, what, how are we defining current? Is that stuff that's being looked on right now, or stuff that's passed in recent years?
When I'm saying current, I'm meaning like current, what is, what is currently being proposed, what is currently being put up for legislation? I mean, I, I guess you could use current and future interchangeably in that, in that.
So, Mr. Boston, I really appreciate this. I think either in finance or somewhere else, we need to constantly look at our enterprise funds. We kind of go the whole year, and don't hear how the enterprise funds are doing. And I think there should be some updates on our different enterprise funds, where they're at and their contribution to the general fund, or their lack of contribution to the general fund-
Right.
-and how that's really playing out. So, I think that should be elevated in our education of how that all works.
And I will say, and, and that's, that's great feedback to, to provide, because when Jessica and her team work on their monthly budget report, they really do hit on, on all funds. I, I think really the, the, the big question mark and the, and the big talking point over the past four years has been the general fund, without, without question, right? Because that's, that's the one where is our operations, our day-to-day for the most part. But the, the enterprise funds and how they interact with not only the general fund, but with the constituents as a whole, and the community as a whole, I think, is, is not only helpful, again, for this group, but also the constituents as they're trying to understand city finances.
Matt, what other? It's just technology. You know, you've talked, and we've all talked in the past about improving technology to create efficiencies and make us more effective, and so just ongoing conversations on where we're at with some of that, you know, what departments are looking at what, how it might improve their budgets, that sort of thing.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's, that's a great talking point for LAAS. I mean, LAAS, I would say every cabinet normally gives us an update of efficiencies that, that they've identified, consolidating contracts, you know, finding best, best tools that are out there. So, definitely something we can add to the list. All right, moving forward, just as the mayor mentioned earlier, you know, now that we have cast a biennial budget, our work isn't over. We're already starting, there, there really is no rest for the wicked on this one. So, here are some of the, the main points that we're going to be dealing with, from a budget and finance perspective in Q1 of 2025. January, we're going to be starting, and, and I know Jessica and team have already started this with the integrated capital management, of starting to discuss what we're going to be doing with the annual capital improvement program. The biennial budget presents itself a, a unique challenge, where we have historically updated our capital plan every single year for a six-year plan. Now that we have a two-year budget, does that mean we are holding true for our capital plan for some, for all, for none? And are we updating that capital plan for a six-year plan? And then are we integrating that back into our biennial budget come September, October, November, December? That is, that is, again, a nice, big lift if we are going to fold that into our, our biennial projections, because as, as you know, the, the capital plan directly flows into the operating budget. So, if we have a biennial budget that is clearly stayed, laid out right now for both '25 and '26, as well as a capital plan that's laid out from '25 to '30, it makes it very challenging to update '26 to '31 and then integrate that into the biennial budget. So, we're having those discussions with key stakeholders. We have that meeting, that kickoff meeting on Monday. And then, January, we're going to be talking about the capital purchases within the Spokane Internal Lending Program. It's known as SILP, not necessarily SIP. I, myself included, often return, refer to it as SIP, but it is SILP, and that's funding both police and fire, and how we're going to be looking at that from a, a long-term perspective. Currently, as it stands, we have about, we have allowability of 15% of our overall Spokane investment pool can be invested into the SILP program. We initially had talked to you a little bit about increasing that. I don't think we're going to need to, because we've had some payoffs and we have that capacity in looking at the budget for '25 and '26 and what fire and police are going to need, but we want to have that conversation with you all, as well as the stakeholders, primarily police and fire in the, in the onset, and developing that plan. And then January, we're going to be meeting with, just as I said before, the, the, the key stakeholders for that ERP roadmapping process. I know LAAS, Jessica, myself, HR have all been kind of swirling around that discussion for many months. We are way behind when it comes to ERPs and other like organizations, especially our size, and it is a big lift that we can't just continue to put off, because it's going to make the work even more, even greater when we do actually go underway, yeah.
What kind of benefit or cost efficiency- What kind of benefit or cost efficiencies do you expect that process will generate?
Well, I mean, I think a lot of the manual processes that currently are underway will be eliminated. I think you're going to get a lot of efficiency from staffing and personnel. I think as AI becomes more and more prevalent in accounting and finance, you're going to see that introduced a lot more into those programs.
There's a big overlay with just technology in general.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, and that's, that's, it, it is the, the first very large of building blocks. I mean, it is the foundation of truly leveraging all of that technology that's out there. But utilizing the right program is going to be very important. So I, I think we've talked a little bit about it. We, we partnered with a, an outfit called Gartner that IT has used in the past that has an immense amount of resources that Jessica and I, I think meet with them either every other week or every week. I feel like I've met with them several, several times over the past few months on, on trying to understand what it is exactly that our needs are and trying to fit that into this whole system. So we're, we're really trying to, we're trying to not go into this process blindfolded. We, we really want to have all of our checkboxes, or at least as many as we possibly can, checked before we can to say, this is what we're looking for, this is best practice, and then start going through the, the actual legwork of the due diligence of the GL cleanup and, and how our current systems will integrate and interfold into this. So it's, it's a lengthy endeavor, but I mean, all of that technology leveraging that you're talking about is definitely utilized in the CRP system.
So Matt, sidebar note, you and the mayor both, we look forward to hearing from HR, because I know they just came on board. And then probably some type of workshop, since we got that book on AI, the new AI policies that came out. I think there should be some type of overview, just be beneficial to me. I don't know if all y'all tried to read through that AI policy. It was a little bit, was over my head, because I'm not a techie person. But I think that'd be beneficial for everybody to have a, a good understanding of how that works and how that would integrate into all that Councilmember Cat Cart's talking about.
Yeah, and that's, that's the big challenge that organizations as a whole have with AI right now. So AI, as I'm sure anybody that's been exposed to it can, can appreciate how fantastic of a tool it is. But the problem when using very public artificial intelligence resources that are out there, like ChatGPT, for example, it goes into the, the wealth of answers that are out there. So A, you have a problem with garbage in, garbage out, right? So if you ask it a question and it's pulling from garbage resources, that's a problem. And then B, primarily for an organization like ours, if you input, if you input a resource to ask them to analyze it, you have now shared that resource with the world. And so the privacy issues that we need to be cognizant of as an organization and employers and all of that is wildly important. And that's, I, I think the most important thing that we can know as, as that AI policy kind of is in place is be very, very careful with how you communicate to AI. That's why banking institutions and other government, large governments that are out there have internal AI, right? They write, write their own code so that it doesn't get sourced out to, to external parties to be able to grab onto it. So as you're using that, just be very careful.
Yeah, so I think that'd be great. And then again, from the HR, the status of our employment. Where we are, we all anecdotally heard that fifty percent of our employees are eligible for retirement tomorrow, or somewhere in that number. I think we need, I'll speak for myself. I need a good understanding of our staffing levels and really where we're at as a city going forward to meet all the requirements that's being placed on us as electors and administration. We don't have a good, clear view and the pathway forward in this area. So one other educational piece.
Absolutely.
On behalf of the council.
And on that, I think some information too, just department by department, on how many are, are working in person, virtual, you know? I mean, I know we allow for two days a week, right, to be virtual, but how many are using it versus not?
Absolutely, yeah. And, and really, I will tell you, at, at the cabinet level meetings that we've had, starting in the, the tail end of November, going into December and now our January meetings, Alex Scott has, has really led the way on trying to understand what it is that we should be focusing on. And within the cabinet group, that rose to the top with staffing and, and where we're at as a, as a whole. Not just from the cost perspective, but how we're recruiting, how we're retaining, how we're training our employees. I mean, all of that is the, the topic of conversation when we're meeting at an executive level. So again, January and February is when we start our encumbrance carryover process. And that will kickoff on January seventeenth. And, and that's just a reminder of what we're taking, that commitments that were tied up in two thousand and twenty four and pulling them into two thousand and twenty five's budget. We have historically, as I'm sure you all can appreciate, touched our budget so many times with SBOs. I think this group has done an excellent job at trying to minimize that as best as possible. Both the executive leadership and the council has tried to dial that down from previous administration, which has been fantastic. I think we still, now with the biennium budget, really need to focus on what we're doing to continue to move that needle in that direction. Adjusting your budget, from my perspective, on multiple, multiple times throughout the year, gives a, a sense of not having a clear roadmap of your budget and not committing to what, what we put so much work into in the beginning. So hopefully, as we do the encumbrance carry forward, we can give ourselves some breathing room to not touch the budget for at least a few days.
It's okay unless it's something I want. So yeah, I'm, I'm open to that.
And then February, we're going to be working on the, the Questica upgrade. I'm not sure if Jessica wants to talk about it. We can talk a little bit more about it as we're talking about that technology. Jessica has been working with our Questica team and seeing what other tools that are out there within their pool or their suite of options. And she's working on further identifying that. March, we're going to be starting with our six-year Street CIP. Again, that leads into the CIP program updates and how that folds into the biennium. That is the CIP. So the, many different acronyms. The CIP is the Capital Improvement Program. The SIP is the Spokane Investment Pool. The S I L P is the Spokane Internal Lending Program. CIP is going to be that six-year capital plan that we're always talking about. So Capital Improvement Plan. SIP, KIP, I don't know, whatever you want to call it, so it doesn't get confusing. Oh, do they? All right, and then leading into what Council President mentioned, staffing. Local twenty-nine collective bargaining negotiations begin. So they were slated to begin at the tail end of two thousand and twenty four with a change in leadership with the, the union there. That was postponed to early two thousand and twenty five. We're looking, and I know Chief Obergeis is working with union leadership to try to get something on the book, books early and often. And we will obviously communicate with you on, on all of those topics as, as they kind of form. So two thousand and twenty five biennium outlook and requirements. SMC oh seven oh one oh two oh, as it's currently written, shows that, or is written to say, modification shall occur no sooner than eight months after the start of the first year of the fiscal biennium and no later than the first regularly scheduled city council meeting in November of the first year of biennial budget. The way that the RCW is written is not to say no sooner than eight months. It's no sooner than the, it's no sooner than the September first to the end of December, twelve thirty-one. The challenge that we have with the addition, with the November addition, is saying that we are going to pass a, essentially an annual budget on November third. And even if you were to take a step back and look at what we've done with the annual budget so far, we are always up against the clock in early, mid-December. So to pull us back to November third, not only, not only gives us the, the increased pressure of getting as much information as we can out to the public and engaging ourselves in those conversations and decisions for two thousand and twenty six, but it also gives us the challenge of not having all of that information. As you all know, we're three months in arrears on one of our largest revenue sources, of which is sales tax. And so to have a November third passing of that ordinance really shaves away two and a half months of, well, yeah, probably two and a half months from the start of where we're at on that information. It's not to say that it's impossible, but I think it definitely does handcuff us in our decision. So I would, yes.
Does that handcuff us just for one year? Because then basically every year after that, we're working on a twelve-month cycle there.
Correct, yeah, yeah, correct. I mean, I would encourage us to fall in line with the RCW. Obviously, we, as an organization, are trying to get it done as soon as possible. We don't want to wait till twelve thirty-one, obviously. But getting more information, as well as having all of the systems that we're talking about, all of the different pieces that fold into the annual, or the biennial budget and change, is important. So just definitely something to think about as, as we're moving forward and a point of discussion, yeah.
The, the charter doesn't contemplate a mid-biennial review, so I don't think the, the budget process necessarily has to be followed dates and whatnot, right? So, but what process do you guys plan to follow for the mid-biennial review? Is the mayor going to put out a budget and then?
So, yes, we're, I mean, we're going to, similar to what we do with the annual budget, it's, it's going to have to be passed by the, the, the city council. So it's going to be a proposal from, from the executive side.
Is it going to be like October first, we get, we get hurt by, I mean, are we going to have?
Well, it kind of is contingent on this, because that's, that's the other wild card there. Is, is if we're talking November third versus December fifteenth, we're, we're presenting to something to you, I mean, we're finishing it in October. I mean, and we're finishing it actually in September to present to you in October, which again, just gives us very little information of what's happening in two thousand and twenty five, because then you, you take October and you rewind three months on top of that. And then that's where, that's the level of information that you have on a lot of the, the important decisions that we're making for our projections for two thousand and twenty six.
So not wanting to go deep into December, is there a way that we could just change from, you know, first regularly scheduled meeting of November to something like first or second in December?
Yeah, I, I think second in December would be fair. I mean, I don't think even, I don't think we've even had anything in years past for our annual budget, saying that it has to be the second Monday in December or the first Monday in December. I think it's just been known that we want to do it before the holidays. And we've, we've always gotten it done that way. So I don't think, I don't think it's necessary. I think to say that it's in accordance with the RCW is, is something that, that is completely doable for the city of Spokane, knowing our track record of when we're getting the annual budget done. But if you're looking for a timestamp and, and flexibility of reality, I think this, you know, the second meeting of December is generally what has happened over the last, every single time I've been able to look at it, the last ten years at least of the annual budget. So food for thought. Other dates that we, we threw in there right now, and this is based on that November third is, you know, August twenty ninth is when the six-year Capital Improvement Plan draft would be in. Preliminary modifications, again, to your point, October sixth, budget hearings, October twentieth and twenty seventh. And that, those are the, the, the community engaged budget hearings and then revenue hearing on October twenty seventh. And Jessica, I, I can't remember, do we even get the, the, the tax data from the county by October twenty seventh for the revenue here? I thought we got it. Yeah, so we don't even have the finalized property tax data for two thousand and twenty six until November. So that makes it even more difficult and we're setting ourselves up for just yet another change to our budget in two thousand and twenty six, early two thousand and twenty six, to true up to the, the true property tax.
Is that a flexible date too, or do the, does the county have like, by this time, we get this out to the, the?
Yeah, they have their own schedule. Because it, what causes them the most great new construction?
Yeah.
So is that like for them, is there a hard date, or is it just like by the end of the year, we get it out?
I don't know if they have a hard, like, first stepping mandate. I know that they have their own internal processes that they try to hold themselves to. With mid-September being, I think, the biggest for new construction, which is their base variable.
Mayor?
I was just going to say, it might be helpful for us just to have it, maybe next time, what those dates are for when we get our sales tax projections, how far back they go, when we get the county data, any other external data sources that we rely on? Like when that information becomes available, it might make it clear, clearer to us about which pieces of information we want to make sure we have when we're putting our budget adjustment together.
So moving forward, back to our, the, the overreaching topic that we really need to talk about when we're talking about financial sustainability and, and just sustainability of our organization, right? Sustainability means recruiting, retaining and maintaining good employees without reducing any sort of service levels that we can. And, and that really stems on our collective bargaining issues, right? We know that in the years of two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty four, it was a wild time. It was a very employee-centric market. There were, all, all of the contracts were up during that time and were negotiated upon. We, we have previously approved collective bargaining agreements that again, began expiring or began expiring on twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty four, but all of our contracts are going to expire again during this biennium. So that's something that we need to be cognizant about as we're, as we're looking for our long-term planning. We've talked about this many, many times, but personnel accounts for the largest operational expense to the city, especially now, more than ever, because we have, we have let our personnel costs largely outpace the revenue due to those, those recent contracts that have been approved. So best practice, and, and I've told you all this when I was working for you, as well as over here, that the best practice, and this is, this is not just unique to government organizations, but also it's universal that you want to keep your personnel costs, your expenditure costs beneath your revenue growth, right? We don't have the, we don't have the opportunity to charge and, and, and absorb it more or put out more widgets or whatever that may be. So we have to keep our total cost of compensation beneath our revenue growth or cut somewhere else in that, yeah.
On that note, it occurs to me, on the list of things to talk about, one of them does not include revenue growth increases. Are there ongoing conversations around those issues? And should they be maybe part of this budget discussion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, we can definitely explore different, different revenue growth options. Revenue growth options obviously come at a cost to our customer. Our customer is our constituent. So it's, it's always a difficult decision to make that. We can't put out more product to get more sales, so it's, it's just.
I just want to make sure if we are considering those things, that we have some public conversations.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Councilmember Cat Cart, with that, that, that was my question about enterprise funds.
Like fees, you mean fees for that?
Fees, are we keeping pays, are we really charging? And we've done some adjustments, absolutely. And we've been very cognizant of not trying to overcharge our customers for what we do, but really, are, is it at the true cost? That's one. Is there revenue in there? That's another. And what is another, what are other sources of revenue? If there should be such a thing in government.
Yeah, and I think we do that on an ongoing basis. And sharing that information is important, because we're constantly doing stress, stress tests of what our customer base can truly take on, right? And I think DSC, utilities, all of those different departments, those, those enterprise funds that you're talking about are constantly evaluated to see, okay, what, are, are we covering our costs and paying, and charging the appropriate amount? So that's something that we can definitely bring forward, as well as if, if, if you all have thoughts, please bring them forward to us as well, because there could be things that we're not seeing as well that, that could, that could spark those conversations. But, so yeah, best practice is to keep total cost of compensation at or below revenue growth. But unfortunately, if, if we look over the last five years, two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty four, benefits, salary and benefit costs in the general fund alone have risen at double the rate of revenue growth. So just to put that into perspective, when we're saying that we have eighty-five percent personnel costs, either that fifteen percent has absorbed that, that delta and/or we have had to reduce personnel at that same time. So we saw personnel reductions by this administration for the first time in several, several years. We cannot continue on that from a, from, we, we can't continue on that path without significant reductions in either staffing or services. So collective bargaining. So collective bargaining focus is going to be wildly important for that. So just an overview of the, the CBAs at their very high level. The Local 29, which is the firefighters' union, is a contract period of January 1, 2020, to December 31, 2024. Here are the pay increases. They also reduced debit days in, they removed debit days in December of 2023 and switched to the philosophy work period, which is nuanced in and of itself. But the debit days themselves was kind of another way to increase the overall hourly rate of what firefighters received, because that previously was them giving back a day. But that's, that's now gone because of the philosophy period. 270, again, 21 to 2025, 4% jump in, in 2021, plus the $2,000 lump sum essential worker pay add to pay. And then it's at 555 and 2.5 to 4 in 2025. Just, just for the council's own information, the sliding scale for most of the, the unions that have a 2.5 to 4%, and it's 270 in M&amp;P in 2025, ended up with a 2.5%. It was based on CPI, so they're on the, on the bottom end of that because of where CPI ended up landing. That's correct, right, Jessica, we were at 2.5, yeah. Police Guild Collective Bargaining Agreement, while these are the pay increases of 577 and anywhere between 3.5 to 7 in 2026. It is important to note that a lot of the specialty pays, the education pays, and the overtime pays also, if not doubled, more than doubled during that same period. So a lot of the, let's just say, for example, a, a bachelor's degree offered our officers from a recruitment standpoint, a significant pay bump from their previous contract to where they're currently at in this collective bargaining agreement. Managerial, yeah.
Can I just highlight that again? So the CPI increase is tied to the Seattle CPI? It's a hybrid, right? It's an average of Seattle and in the West.
Yeah, it's, it's Seattle, Bellevue, Tacoma based, because the, that's just what was.
Those are our comps.
Approved, yeah. Managerial and professional A and B, while there is some nuance in the individual contracts itself, the, the contract period as well as the pay increases are the same. 554, 2.5 to 4, and 1 to 3 in 2026. Again, as a reminder, 2.5% was the, was where we landed for 2025. So that really lands the, the end of the, the discussion of looking forward of, okay, this is what we're, we're suggesting that we talk about in 2025. We want to open this up for council. We've got a lot of different ideas. I think these are all great ideas that have come from both council and administration on things to hit on, whether it be in budget meetings, whether it be in committee meetings, not even necessarily, some of these need to be in the finance committee when we're talking about HR and other things. But is there anything else that, that you all feel that we're missing? Or should we plan on talking in March for our next discussion? And this being the, the proposed set of agenda items?
Yeah, I think it looks good. I think the, the bi-monthly makes a lot of sense. Hoping that we can utilize the study session for specific topics that some of our budgets discussions became about specific topics. So not missing out on that opportunity, but other than that, I think that looks pretty decent.
Okay.
I think as part of the space utilization conversation, what does it also look like to off-ramp some of those?
Absolutely.
Now, Councilmember Dylan, I heard historically we had off-ramped a significant number of properties in prior years, and we don't really have a bunch to off-ramp. But I think educational-wise, again, we don't even know what properties we have. I know Jeff Chil's done a great job in trying to gather that information, but as a council, y'all may know, but I think overall, we don't really know what we own.
Yeah, there's, there's a GIS map that's out there, that's internal that we have, but it's, it's very technical, and you have to kind of highlight each of the properties to understand what it is and, and what department owns it and what the use is for it. We're hoping that leveraging this, this real estate expert that we've contracted with will give us a little bit more of an insight of how we can have just more of a clear-cut listing of what it is that we can truly investigate. I mean, I know we were talking about a lot of different properties that are out there because many of them are really, we're, we're losing money on. And, and that's something that we shouldn't be afforded to do, especially when we have this beautiful piece of property that's 60% utilized. So as you know, we've, we've gone through this process of looking at this building, kind of our, our headquarters, as well as looking at all of the other buildings and seeing how we can fold some of those employees in and how we can get creative.
Mayor?
Yeah, and there, the two sides to that coin, one is what we have, the other is what we need. And so the space utilization at City Hall is a piece of that, but I think we're all pretty aware of the inadequacy of our current municipal court facilities. So that's something I've been thinking about. We've been talking about Maggie Yates and others, thinking and working on opportunities and options there. And then we have a set of facility relationships with the county that we also need to kind of come to terms with. One is, is the emergency communication system, Shrek, currently operating out of a city facility. Currently, I don't believe we're receiving rent for that facility. Shrek is made, made an offer on a new facility, so, and we're obviously in negotiations with them around the operating fees and governance issues and, and where we're headed with that, but there's a facility issue there. There are facilities that we share on the county campus. The county has notified us of issues around upgrading those facilities. We've been asking questions about that before we just renew without knowing for sure what the game plan is for those upgrades. Some of them obviously need to happen, clean building upgrades and other things like that. But we don't want to sign a blank check in a contract, we want to see what we're, what we're looking at there. So I, I think this is a, a good time for us to get some key understandings about where we're headed with respect to meeting those needs and communicating transparently with the county what our intentions are and what we think is appropriate and fair for the city's share of those responsibilities.
Councilwoman Cat Cart?
Yeah, and I was hoping that at one of our next urban committee meetings, we might have a conversation on the Clean Buildings Act, where that stands, particularly as it impacts the city. Obviously, there's a lot of folks in the city it will impact, but we especially need to know how it's going to affect us. And then I'm also hoping some of that review will include kind of where we're at with City Hall. Do we think we could fit the courts in or some of the other departments in here? How is that going to work? And then also health and safety. You know, I think the mayor touched on kind of that safety aspect with some of the upgrades, but also like our police department has black mold over their heads. It's not a, it's probably in the courts too, and so it's, it's not a healthy situation. And I think we need to see where we're at on that too.
Definitely. Anything else? All right, again, I just want to thank you all again for the continued conversation. Thank to Kate, Jessica, everybody on the team that has been part of this process. It's been great, and we'll plan on talking about this in March and touching on some of these, but also plugging some of these topics into committee meetings over the next few months as well.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Again, thank you. I haven't seen you all, so happy new year to all of you all. We are excited about 2025. And again, thank each and every one of your, every one of you for your commitment to the work that you do. It is appreciated and of our value. This meeting is adjourned.